November 3rd, roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Our Alderman Sizbarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley. Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police.
Here, I declare a quorum present, please stand, join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of October 20th.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Who was the second? Okay. Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, written communiquees. I only have one written communiquee and that's, if there's no objection, next week at committee, we will bring forward a 3,800 square foot sports bar. We have a request for a liquor license. It'll come to committee next week unless there's a, an objection, or objections, I should say. Okay. Next, under mayor's report, a couple things. Free electronics recycling event, Addison Township, Highway Department 411, West Potter Street, Inwood Dale, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The last one of the year will be Saturday, November 12th, 8 to 12. Then, this Saturday, November 5th, will be a Veterans Day breakfast held at Salt Creek Golf Course on the 5th from 8:30 to 10:30. All veterans and their families are invited to attend the event. After the breakfast, there will be a Veterans Day ceremony held at the Wooddale Veterans Memorial at 269 West Irving Park Road. Ceremony will begin at 11:00 AM. In case of any bad weather, the 11:00 AM ceremony will be held at Salt Creek. So if it's raining, please come over to Salt Creek for the ceremony. And again, thank you to the Wooddale Park District and I task a bank for the sponsorship of this event. And I'll turn over to Mr. Mermas for the manager's report.
Just one item, the Cubs won the World Series last year. That's it.
Serious part? I was gonna say that, but I knew you were just dying to. So I left it for you. Next, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion, if no objections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, approve your consent.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, Mike was first.
Mike?
Yes. It was Peter, Peter was first, Mike was second. And roll call.
Okay, stop. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes, now I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of purchase of two 2017 Ford interceptor utility vehicles from Curry Motors in a not to exceed amount of $54,222. Item number two, approval of change order number one with Robinson Engineering for the Ward 2 and 3 stormwater improvements in an amount not to exceed $149,150. Item number three, an approval of amendment number seven with H.R. Green for the Elgin O'Hare Western Access Project to extend the agreement of an, agreement an additional six months. Item number four, resolution to establish the annexation and city services incentive program. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Alderman Catalano, Alderman Jacob, second. Roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That's it.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports. Planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano.
No report, mayor.
Public health and safety.
One report.
Alderman, Alderman Sorrentino, Alderman Wesley is not here as chairman.
Uh, we have an ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 14, section 14.517 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wooddale regarding the possession of cannabis and drug paraphernalia.
That is your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions? Mike, second, he was first. Roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. And that concludes your report?
That concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Woods.
I have a whole bunch of reports here.
Nice, very nice. There's stuff going on.
Lots of things happening. First is a resolution seeking to approve a temporary construction easement to provide access at 295 Forest View to provide drainage.
Is that, is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Jacob.
Could we just get a little synopsis of, of this?
Mr. York, you're gonna take this.
Yes, as part of the Forest View project, we need to get the water, water crosses from the west side of Forest View to the east side of Forest View. Approximately 295 Forest View. What we're doing is at two, between 295 and 277 Forest View, and we'll be bringing the 277 Forest View easements hopefully next council meeting. We need to provide, there's a cross culvert there and that water goes to some wetland area between 295 and 277 that goes all the way to Salt Creek. So we're redoing the cross culvert pipe and then we've gonna put pipe in the ground and take it approximately 120, about 100 feet back into the properties and then the water will be released into this wetland area. So we have to build a pipe. So this, the first, the first, the temporary easement is a 30-foot easement in order to do the work and then there's the permanent easement's a five-foot easement. So if we have to go back there and, you know, clean the culvert or do a minor repair or something, we can, we have access to that.
Any further, Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Is there a home present or is there something, probably didn't drive the, I didn't drive to look at the sites.
Mr. York.
Well, I guess what was the question?
Is there a home present or is this a vacant piece of property?
This, there's two houses, there's one at 295, which is in, in the middle of a double lot and then there's one house at 277. So, but it's on the edge of those properties. It's currently, there's a, the water currently flows through there right now, we just don't have an easement. So in order to properly do this project, we need an easement there.
Follow up, go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
And there's no, no sidewalks or anything on the properties that we'll have to address or redo?
Mr. York.
No, Forest View does not have any sidewalks and will not as part of this project.
I meant the house, on the side of the house.
We are not going in through any permeable areas.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Matt, you put some barricades on that street this week?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
On Forest Preserve, we, we did due to a garbage truck hitting a ComEd line or Comcast line, but I don't believe we did on Forest View.
So you, for.
Forest View.
Yeah, Forest View, right. Is that where the easements are that we're doing for this road?
On Forest View.
Mr. York.
Forest View.
Okay, so there hasn't been no barricade set up by these properties whatsoever for the easements or anything to do work on those?
Mr. York.
No, this is part, this project is the one that's delayed due to the Army Corps of Engineers delaying our permitting process. This project won't start until the spring.
You have a follow up?
Yeah, because I've got three phone calls from over there that says they're setting up barricades, but no one knows what's going on.
Yeah.
For.
So you're saying there's barricades over there?
Right.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that is for the easements that they're doing work on easements or?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Sorry, there was, I believe that there was two garbage truck versus lines. I believe one was at, on Forest Preserve and I believe there was one at 290 Forest Preserve Drive, or Forest View Drive, sorry about that. That happened on Tuesday, I believe. So, there's, there's no project that the city is currently working on, on Forest View Drive. It has nothing to do with the easements that we're asking for today. That project is delayed and that project has not started, it will not start until the spring.
You have a follow up, Alderman Wesley?
No.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Next is a resolution seeking to approve a permanent maintenance easement to provide access at 295 Forest View for drainage. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes.
Uh, next is approval of change order number one with H.R. Green for the Potter Street Beautification Project in an amount not to exceed $14,593.73. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Questions on this? Roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
No.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, a resolution seeking to approve a license agreement between the City of Wooddale and Hindsight Holdings, Inc. for a non-exclusive license agreement for the use of the city right-of-way.
Second.
That is my motion.
Okay. Who was who's second, Tony or Peter?
Peter.
Peter. Any questions on this? Alderman Woods.
Yeah. First, thanks for the drawing, now I can actually see what's going on over there and, and everybody else can see that too. So, my question here, 'cause I know that there's some issues with the, over there with parking is, is, is there any way that we could give them two more spots on, on Potter? Which still leaves us like 28 instead of 43, that would reduce that. Actually, you could move it east and take up some of that seven feet and still wind up with like 30 feet instead of the 43. And I say that 'cause there's actually like five units there and if you divide up nine spaces, how do you do that? So, I, I don't think that we'd be losing anything unless I'm missing something. I did drive over there to see what the sightlines were, how far you'd, you actually have to pull up pretty far to see that corner, so I don't think we're losing anything.
You were talking about on Potter?
On Potter.
Good, do you, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
He said they currently have nine, you want to give them two more.
No, they.
Go ahead.
Well, on, on Potter, they have eight.
They have eight.
Right.
You want to give them two more, 10, so two per?
Correct, so it would work out. And, and part of the reason that lease came up to me was, one, when I looked at the number of units, but two, because some of the other buildings are looking to lease and change people in there and those parking spaces have become an issue. And they have way more than they do here, so if at all we could help, that's.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I also looked at that spot. I, I'm okay with doing that, but I, I want to preface out to everybody watching at home that we will be watching the side streets and I think we want to avoid parking on the side streets. So if two helps alleviate that, I'm okay with that because we will be enforcing very heavily. We do not want our residents burdened with resident parking, uh, to enforce parking. So if they need a couple extra spots, I'm okay with that. I just want to make it very clear to everybody watching at home that, and I mean business owners as well there, if you're parking on the street and you, you have your folks parking on the street, we are going to enforce parking because we're not gonna burden our residents with resident parking. I'm done.
I think that that's fair.
So you're talking from 43 feet, basically, what are those spots, nine feet?
Nine, nine foot. So my thought was if, if you want to keep that, I mean this, we could adjust the seven. I would leave that up to the engineers and just amend the motion that the license agreement would include two more spaces on Potter, however they want to work them out.
Mr. Brown, you want to comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think if you, if there's a inclination of the council to follow that, then I would have, I would make the, a motion to amend the, the license agreement to add two additional parking spots through the modification of the depiction of exhibit B. Would that be acceptable to the mover and the second?
That's acceptable to me.
Okay, Alderman Woods and. Alderman Jacob, you were the second there, did you agree to that amendment?
Alderman Woods, if you could just tell me where the two spots is?
Look at the exhibit. You got a 43-foot section and you got a seven-foot section. So you need basically 18 feet, so seven and then another 11, it'd be like 32. Are you at the exhibit?
Right. I, I agree, it would be easier to, for me to be able to point. Yeah, it's, still would like to see it, it's hard to see it on here. Well, I, I, I agree 100%, it's.
Matt, can you make that happen? Nick, do we got a screen? Go ahead. All right. While, while they're getting there ready, we can go to the next item, item number five. Well, it's basically the same, unless there's another change there.
No, there's, there's, there's no changes.
Oh, you want to go to number five?
We can, we can go to number five.
Let's go to number five while they get the projector ready.
Is that okay with the city attorney, do I want to overstep my bounds?
No, no, we, we asked already, so he said yes, no problem.
All right, so number five, a resolution seeking to approve a license agreement between the City of Wooddale and Mark, Mark Tell Investments, LLC, Inc. for a non-exclusive license agreement for the use of the city right-of-way. As a pick at the, the tabs drawings.
And that's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this one? Roll call please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky. Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. And now we're just waiting for the.
And that passes.
Technology to get there. Mr. York is feverishly working.
Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
I just have a comment for the city manager. In the future, when we're looking at drawings, can we make sure we have this ready in case we want to look at it?
Mr. Mermas?
Uh, we, we always have the drawings ready for our presentations. As this wasn't a planned presentation item, we didn't have it up and, talked about this many times, I didn't anticipate you wanting to see the drawing tonight.
We're at hindsight, right?
Right.
Okay, so I believe we were talking about this area right in here.
Right, correct.
Okay, let me see if I can get any better. Okay, so we have 72 feet here. Then we have this extension here and we have this.
They only have seven feet on the, on the east side.
The east side has seven feet and the west side has 43 feet.
43 feet here. Well, this area here, um.
That's the next property.
Sure, okay.
Right.
So you want to take an additional.
I want, I want that, let me help you out. So the engineer will look at it, I don't know if we can take the whole seven feet. So the adjustment will be 18 feet. Eighteen feet will be taken out of the seven and the remainder out of the 43.
Whatever we can take out of the seven and whatever's left over.
Right, so seven, we can only take out three or four, then the rest will come out of 43. If we can get the whole seven, that's great.
You can explain that.
All right, so basically add two spots in that, and I don't know, maybe the seven feet's already too close to the next property line, we might have some setbacks.
I, I think the property line's okay, I think that the, there's a utility in the way. I think that that's the.
Yeah, there's something that's right at the end of that seven, it's a pole, I believe.
Matt, for us.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
For us non-builders, I saw 43.
Yes.
How much are you proposing we would take off of that spot?
18.
18 feet?
Well, some, somewhere between 18 and 15, probably.
And that.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So basically.
We take 18 feet off of there, that's 18 feet more that is exposed to ash, which is again our main gateway, which is the whole reason we're doing this in the first place, which is also more cars that can be parked there, which, as we all know, becomes another issue. Is there any way to take two, 18 feet or the majority of that from that other side? That's away from the gateway, closer to Potter?
No, that's another property line, don't forget, it's another building.
That's another.
Separate, separate deal.
This building right here.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
And this building here are not the same property owner. So basically what, in my quick rough, using this little guide as a.
25 feet.
It's gonna be approximately right here.
No, thanks.
That's where it would start. That's approximately 18 feet, just.
If you have to use the whole 18 feet.
Yeah, if, my quick measurement. Yeah, if not, you're probably right here. So, that's where the, that's where it would stop.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We had a motion and a second.
Right.
Well, I, I never amended the motion, I, I wouldn't like, I do not want to amend the motion.
Okay.
I want to leave the motion as, as original.
Do we have a second on the motion as amended?
To amend it.
The motion was to amend it?
No, no.
Or to the original motion?
Well, the original.
We have a second on the original.
The motioner made a motion, it was a second, then the motioner made an amendment, then we, no.
Okay.
Or, then we're looking, so now Peter says he does not second that, so I'm now asking, is there a second?
Right.
To, no, to the amended motion. Do we have a second? Doesn't seem like we have a second. Uh, we have a second. Okay, now do we have a discussion on the motion as amended? Do we understand? We're, we're talking about the 18 feet.
Right.
Is everybody, okay, so we have a motion and a second, no questions, I'll call the roll.
So can I say something?
Go ahead, you have a comment? Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So right now, we are voting to chop away another.
To add two spots.
Yes, chop away 18 feet of that 43-foot easement.
Correct, that is the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Which again, is that section there closest to ash? Which is closest to our gateway, which is the whole reason we're doing this project, guys and gals, remember that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
But while we're.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Just one statement. And, and whether, you know, I think we agree that we want to clean that up, but I don't want to put a business, out of business to do that too. I mean, so it's a hard, I, I get what you're saying, but I gotta look at a building that's been there and useful and been a good neighbor for, for years, like it or not. Those were legal parking spaces and they were there.
They were.
And, and now we're gonna clean it up and all, all we're looking for is to get at least two spaces per unit.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
Well, I mean, the owner already agreed to this, so, I mean, the owner and his attorney and our attorney, I mean, so this has all been agreed to, so I don't know why we would want to change it at this point.
Hold on. Alderman Messina.
I, I respect what Alderman Woods is saying, I can appreciate that, but this is what we agreed on and this is what a big amount, a large amount of residents are expecting. I can appreciate the contribution that the business has made, uh, but I and Alderman Jacob represent the residents. That's my number one priority and kind of, to me, it's, it heart, it breaks my heart that people tell me they can't even invite their family over because they're mortified to drive by this intersection. They're mortified, they have to tell people to take a different direction to their home to bypass some of these properties. So for me, I, I'm all about the residents and I'm all about their home values because that to me is number one. Uh, I appreciate the businesses and I think we work with them a lot and hence why they agree to this, so I think is, I think we all go with what we all read to, the original proposal.
Well, we have a motion and a second right now. Alderman Woods.
Again, I was elected by residents, I support the residents, but an integral part of the community is businesses too. So, again, if we set ourselves up that we're gonna come here and he leases the building to somebody and there's no parking spaces, so what do we tell the guy? Just, sorry, I don't want to create more problems than we solve. I get that you want it to look nicer, I'm with you. I don't, I don't see how two more spaces and, and we'll take as much as the seven feet as possible to, to try to make it work out. That's all, that's all I'm saying. We're not asking to put back 10 more on the other side, it makes sense that we took all those away because when you, when you look down there, it looks terrible. And, and I understand, fully understand what you're trying to accomplish. And probably if it was all green, that would be good, right? If we had no parking, but, but still, we have to work with the businesses and be business friendly as somebody says up here all the time.
I'll make a quick comment. The worst spot in that area was the ash street side because people came up to the stop sign and almost get clipped by people making the left, going east while they're trying to creep up to see if any oncoming traffic because they don't, not have a stop sign. The Potter side, that side right there, the parking's right up to the street, whether it's 25 or 43, I don't think it's gonna be that detrimental. Maybe we just give them one more, I, but, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
If, if one would. If a compromise of one would be good, I.
Yeah, I mean, my question is just.
Go ahead, Alderman.
We've spent a ton of money and I, I'm sure Pat's probably smiling. We spent a ton of money in, in going back and forth with this. They agreed to this, you know, I, I have to question now what's happened between when we made this agreement and why we're proposing a change. You know, here we are, weeks later and.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
I'll answer the question. I mean, this is the first realistic drawing that we've had on these properties. Everything else has been handled between attorneys and legalese and in fairness to property owners, this isn't something they deal with every day. And when you're dealing with the city, it's not like you feel that you have the upper hand. I think that they've been fair and open in, in dealing with the city too. And like I say, if it comes down to one space, one's better than nothing, certainly there, there can be a little compromise, that's all I'm saying. I don't want to ruin the project. I want it to look good and, and if it's all enforced, I think we're gonna solve the problem.
And honestly, we don't want another thing that's happening over there on Irving Park where the gentleman's coming in and having a hard time renting because unfortunately he's got.
But I don't want 85 people coming here and saying they can't sell their house because it looks like trash all along Potter. It's the whole purpose we're doing this for. But.
Hold, hold on. Hold on. I mean, that area, generally, the, those parking spots are probably the best out of all those two areas. I mean, that's, they're probably the cleanest, and that spot, and those spots right there.
I'm not talking that spot. I'm just talking in general.
No, no, but I know, believe me, every day I drive by and pass every day, and all these trucks are lined up to drop off metals. That's, that's another problem which I've discussed with the chief. And naturally, ash, people can never look around the corner, and then we had cars sticking out east, west of ash. That was always pretty sloppy. Do you guys want to? Are we looking at one extra spot? Can we have a vote? We have a motion and a second. The motion's for two right now. Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I'll, we'll compromise for one. Let's do one.
Alderman Woods, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Secondary agree?
Yeah.
Mike's, Mike is the second there. Hold on. No, no, the 43 from there, that's...
We'll just...
Yeah, they'll figure it out.
I'll leave it up to the engineer. Like I say, I don't know if he can get the whole seven feet on the other side.
Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna be able to use seven feet. All right, are we... I need a second or two to agree first. Yes? Okay. Alderman Messina, something else?
This is, every foot's important to me here, and I'm sorry to be like this, but can we, can this be amended where it's up to a certain amount, because I...
Parking stalls are what, eight and a half feet or nine feet?
Nine foot.
Nine? Nine feet. It's nine feet. We're talking about nine feet.
So, no more than nine. Can be amended?
So, yeah, you have...
Exactly that amount, because I have not given up any more.
You have 50 feet there. It's gonna be 41. Mr. York?
Staff will work with H.R. Green. We will reduce the amount of green space by no more than nine feet, and we will take as much out of the seven foot as possible.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, unless we have other questions on this. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky? Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.